Good evening.
We are ready to begin our public hearing. The public here and we'll... Actually, we don't have a time limit. If it gets too long, we'll cut it off. But we do expect citizen input. This is on our comprehensive plan. And at this time, I'm going to ask Councilman White to give us the indication.
I hope you follow. We just thank you for allowing us to be together at this time. We ask that you would just guide each of us in this session. We ask that you would just keep the matters that are before us at the forefront. We ask that you would just continue to be with the citizens of Allendale County. We ask that you would just give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding as we carry out everything that needs to be discussed tonight, these blessings and all others. We ask you to pray in Jesus Christ's name for a second.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman White. This comprehensive plan is our guide that will lead us as we plan the future of the county, with cooperation from the municipality. It certainly has by and end as it have in the past. But it will dictate no less how we further develop our community, which is very important. So I don't see the title, but we do have an audience that will help us adopt Allenelle County Comprehensive, 2024 Comprehensive Plan. And I'm just going to read just a little bit what it says. Whereas Allenelle County established a planning commission for the county, which has the powers and duties as provided by SE, code title. Whereas the Allenelle County Planning Commission recommends that Allenelle County adopts a comprehensive plan as a whole by a single ordinance. And whereas the county comprehensive plan aims to balance economic progress with the preservation of the county's rich natural and cultural heritage. And whereas by setting clear objectives and strategies across various sectors, the comprehensive plan seek to enhance the quality of life for residents while promoting sustainable development. Whereas the county's comprehensive plan aims to create a sustainable and prosperous future, fostering a vibrant community that values its past while embracing growth and innovation. That's the bulk of the ordinance that will govern our 2024 Comprehensive Plan. And we open for any comments. The plan has been available for the last few weeks at the administration building. I think we've had several copies picked up. And as they're picked up, we replace them with other copies. So we open for comments, citizens. And you may be asking, what does it entail? Well, I'll give you a good example. That comprehensive plan kind of tell us where we can locate certain industries, subdivisions, where we can actually do regulation, whether it be residential property, commercial property. It's all-inclusive in telling we, the custodians of the county, what is the best location to put certain aspect of growth. And we take that and we use it as a roadmap as we develop. And as we get requests from citizens, from industries, we ask that if we make a determination, and that's the planning commission, that XYZ should not be here, and if XYZ decide to protest it, then that's when the council get involved. Chair, recognize Mr. Pinkney.
Chairman Rockson, the... Each town has a zoning plan. Fairfax and the town of Allenville, and then the county has one. Now, those and city will falls under the county plan. Now, does this new plan, what I had read, does it interfere with the present plans, zoning plans that we have? Or did this include them in that plan as is?
Very good question. To our knowledge, the planning commission did not make any major changes to the existing plan. Some matters are just updated, mainly with updated maps and references and additional information. So you protect it if you live in Fairfax, you said, for Allenelle.
Almost.
Always in city, all that. Yeah. You still there in Martin?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, does the new plan contain any timelines for various things, initiatives that begin or be, any of that sort?
No timeline. It gives a general description of how the plan should be carried out. It doesn't set... Because basically, when you adopt a plan, it is what it is. Now, there may be reference to looking at additional information. And once additional information becomes available, the planning committee immediately forward that information. And if there is any revision that need to be done, thanks to Lord Savannah Council Government and our determination, excuse me, after consulting with them, then the planning commission will make the necessary recommendation to the revision.
Just a final question. Does it say anything about initiatives that the town is going to take in terms of identifying and encouraging businesses to relocate here? Final ways to renew the neighborhoods and create new neighborhoods? Does it say any of that kind of stuff?
Well, the whole purpose of the comprehensive plan is to encourage, because the plan includes additional information that's vital for growth, for the municipalities, and also for the county. And I think Mr. White, who actually served on that, he probably could better answer that. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was going to say too, one of the things that the plan did is it looked at the changes that occurred over the last 10 years from the previous plan. So there are a lot of, you know, obviously, population changes. There are a lot of changes within, you know, government structures or whatever. So what it did lay out also was what might be feasible for us to do within the next 10 years. And then, you know, thinking about, like you were talking about, the neighborhoods and all of those things, it took an assessment of how some of those neighborhoods have changed. So, you know, what might be needed? You know, what did we lose in the last 10 years? You know, what might be needed to help encourage businesses, population, all of those things? So all of that was taken into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. White. I hope that answered your question. Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
Yes?
I just want clarity, like Mr. Pinkney said, that Fairfax have their own plan. Is that the plans that y'all amended those, that plan that y'all adopted, y'all doing? Or is it separated?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's separated. Just, you know, obviously, town of Allendale has a comprehensive plan, like I said, town of Fairfax does. But this is pretty much any of the areas that have not had a comprehensive plan through and the Lord Savannah, you know, pretty much works with us to do that. So any of the areas, the unincorporated areas of smaller municipalities that don't have it, they would be a part of the county's plan. But it's not, but it's not fair, we're not cutting across Fairfax.
So that's what I'm trying to say. Because of the falls in the town limits, you know, there's a different plan being made.
Right, that's right.
Once y'all have existed, we just need to make sure it's clear.
Right.
There you go.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? Would you like to get a motion that we close this public hearing on our comprehensive plan for 2024? Counsel, can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second. Moving properly second, that the public hearing will come to a close on our comprehensive plan for Allenelle County for year 2024. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses, by the same side? Ayeset. Now, we will move into our regular council meeting for Thursday, May 15, 2025. And the first thing we have on the agenda is a presentation of the 2025 Presidential Scholarship recipient, and that happens to be Arianna Priestler. So tonight, I'm pleased to recognize the recipient of the South Carolina Association of County 2025 Electoral Presidential Scholarship. The program's awards a $5,000 scholarship to a graduating high school senior who's a resident of the same county as the association president. This year, I have the honor of serving in that role, and I'm especially proud to recognize one of our county's top students. The Scholarship Selection Committee met this spring to review all the applicants. I said a couple months ago that the number of applicants was the highest number we've had in years. And I certainly don't envy the committee, because this was a very tough decision. But I do believe they selected a young woman who accomplishment almost deserved. This year recipient is a graduating senior of Allenelle Fairfax High School and will attend Clemson University this fall to study criminal justice. Arianna has a very impressive academic record. She's a member of the National Honor Society and the Allenelle Fairfax High School Beta Club. She's also a leader on the junior ROTC, where she served as battalion executive officer and is part of the color guard. She also played volleyball and basketball through her high school career, serving as a captain of the volleyball team. As a member of the Beta Club and National Honor Society, she served our community, including taking part in food and clothes drives and providing Thanksgiving dinners to our senior citizens. She was also a Girl Scout for four years. In addition to her academic and extracurricular activities, this young woman currently works as a receptionist at Fairfax Town Hall. At this time, please help me congratulate Arianna Priestler on being named the recipients of the South Carolina Association of County 2025 Presidential Scholarship. And Arianna, it's an honor to recognize you. On behalf of Allendale County Council and Association, South Carolina Association of Counties, we certainly congratulate you and wish you the best and all that to you.
Thank you.
All to the county's pictures. Arianna, I just want to read this. It says, presented to Arianna as priestess, Allenelle County, in recognition of her achievement and as a recipient of the 2025 Presidential Scholarship. Again, congratulations. You'd like to say anything? You have the floor.
I would like to thank everyone who's been here for joining me and congratulating me on my amazing accomplishment to the council. Thank you. I would love to put Allenville County back on the map for bigger and better things.
Very good. As I mentioned several months ago, the South Carolina Association of Counties expanded our scholarship program, where we went from four year to actually 13, which allowed the counties to come around and start taking 12 years to come around. It takes four years now. So we repeat that process. And of course, as president of the association, this year, Allenelle County was, without a doubt, was going to have a recipient. And we had 12 other counties that also received scholarship money for their county. So it's really good. We ask what association of counties are doing for the counties. They're doing a lot, you know? They're putting money back in the community. And scholarships are certainly very important, no matter where you live. Again, congratulations. Okay, we're down to a declaration of court, counsel. I feel like we have. And we're down to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the agenda.
Got a motion to amend the agenda?
To add Dr. Monarch to the agenda for a report from the Lord Council of Government.
Okay. Got a motion from Councilwoman Jennings to add Dr. Monarch? Molnar? Molnar? I've heard it so many ways. To the agenda. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any poses?
I'm just like...
Oh, second. You second, I'm sorry. Okay. All in favor? Aye aye. Approval amendments. We have approval for our April 17 meeting, which was our regular meeting, and also special meeting of April 28th, which is a special call meeting. Can I get a motion from counsel?
I will.
Second. Moving properly second, that we approve the amendments from April 17th and April 28th. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Ayeset. Again, welcome. And we're down to public comment. And E-911 address, is that?
That's correct.
That's you?
Thank you.
Are you, we're going to change your name here?
I didn't know the name. I didn't even scratch.
Okay, Mr. Pinkney.
To the chairman, to the councilmen, and to the staff, good evening.
Good evening.
I leave a request on all the players' desks about E-911 address. My first question would be, as you all did a resolution or ordinance to do that, that's my first question.
Have we done, would you repeat that, James?
Have you all did a resolution or ordinance to establish what you all have in that big space?
And as I read this, it says E-91...
No, no, no. Read, you're reading the letter again?
Oh, oh, damn.
Yeah.
James, you know, we like to have them before the meeting. Maybe we did get it and I overlooked it. Okay.
I didn't get it before meeting.
Well, I gave it to y'all before the meeting, but y'all weren't here.
Okay. Okay. All right. So you request for 911 address?
No, read the top of it and read.
There's a $100 fee for all new... There's a hundred dollar fee for all new addresses affected immediately. Please note that we do not accept credit card at this time. Okay?
Now, where'd that come from?
I think that was a recommendation that came to us and we, we say go with it.
That's illegal.
Well, you can challenge that.
Budget and control, budget and control pays for all E911 addresses. Through cell phone and landline. And equipment for E911, such as vehicles, such as computers. Anything E911 need to do addressing is funded through budget control. So that's a due calculation.
James, I was aware of the fact that in the past, and I'm talking about 10 or more years ago. When I was involved with addressing. We would request address to be done by our personnel that down at E911.
That's right.
I've been told, and I think this is the reason why it came up. And council, please chime in. I think it came up simply because it's no longer being performed by E911 personnel.
It's a, I'm not here to argue with you.
I know.
I want you to go search it. Budget control, furnish all that. E911 is emergency and is disaster prepared. They formed that in the early nineties.
Yes.
When they did that, E911 addresses was put in E911 so that people could be found.
Yeah.
Easily. And if a emergency came and if a disaster come, they would know where everybody at. That's why it should always be E911. It never was supposed to be taken out of E911, but somebody took it out.
Well, from my understanding, and I may be wrong, it's not out of E911, they just not doing it.
What it's supposed to do?
Because I think.
Who involves?
What has happened, once a new address is, has been determined, it's reported back to E911.
But see, the thing is, budget control won't pay that person on the outside of E911. They only pay that person inside E911. If you will move that person out of E911, you moved him out of budget control. Now you asking the citizen to pay for something that budget control already pays for.
We definitely would double check that.
And I would have never found out, but I needed three addresses. And I came back and I got people pay them, said I got to pay $300. I said, bull crap. We, we, y'all need to do something.
We will.
And soon.
Okay. You would be right.
Well, I'm not, I don't, I'm not aware of this, but I look into this.
I think we got a tip bit of this, I think from our administrator maybe a couple of months ago. And because of the, because of the number of address and requests. And the fact that, as I understood, it was no longer being performed by E911 personnel. But we definitely will check and do the verification. And if we, if we're wrong, we will certainly return your money. I know you paid.
What, what problem is now you got, all those people that you done charged that hundred dollars. You have to make it.
Oh, yeah. And that's what I'm saying.
And, 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 and I have the law here. So I know the law. I was part of the law when it was developed. So, yes.
What's that statute number that you, you're looking at? Is it 2347?
Well, I don't have it on this, this note right here. So.
Because it looks like 234760 addresses there. And I'm just, I'm just reading, it looks like it does permit for local governments to, um. I just gave it Mr. Sanders.
So it does say when you draw the fee, Jamie, that's what you're saying?
It appears. That's why I gave it to our attorney.
But, but, contact budget control and they'll tell you you're wrong.
But they probably, James, they probably would say, they would probably say, but you have, you have the option.
You were the option and you were passing over.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Monarch, we're going to let you, let you count. Have you ready, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give you a quick update about what's been going on with the Lower Senate Council of Governments. A little bit about what's happened in the last year, but especially what's happened in the last couple of months. I think that might be of interest to your council and the citizens here in Allendale County. I'll forego the formalities, you know, most of you know, most of you know here, we're the pass of the office. We support a number of different programs. I'm going to go into some of those and just tell you where we are right now. First of all, I want to make sure that I recognize Mr. Chaney. Glad you're with us, sir. Just to let you know, we have an upcoming board meeting in June on the 12th in Aiken. And prior to that, we will be having a new board member orientation and hope you can make that.
Okay.
Also, to let you all know, Chairman Robinson and Willis Jennings are both board members. Along with Mayor Boach Sauls, Tony Major and John Martin. Y'all heard the skinny budget that's been happening in Washington DC that was proposed by the president and his staff. I want to let you know how it's going to affect the Lower Senate Council of Governments. First of all, one of the programs that we perform is community development block grants. Those block grants, that program out of HUD is slated to be eliminated. Right now, I'm going to go back on this, it's going to use a different way for you all. We just finished up the town of Allendale upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant, which is community development block grant. That was about the 1.2 million dollars. That closed back in December. That program will no longer be in existence if it's eliminated in the skinny budget.
You don't think, excuse me, doc, you don't think the state will step in with additional money on that?
I don't know, sir. I don't know if it's going to go with the Rural Infrastructure Authority or not. I know that some of that money comes from the state, some of that comes from the feds. And so right now, everything, I hate to use the term, but it's a crapshoot.
But, but the last figure I saw from the RIA, you know, they had quite a bit of money. And I don't think that was all state money.
The 1.5 billion, 1.6 billion that they had went from, that was our money that went to the state. It became state money, that's what they're.
That's what they use?
Yeah.
Okay.
The local regional planning stuff that we do, really glad that you had the public hearing tonight. You're going to be having the third, um, third reading of the plan, and so that's great. Economic development, EDA, that's scheduled to be eliminated as well. The housing consortium and everything that we do in the area of housing is scheduled to be eliminated. The stuff that we do with aging, we do a lot of different things with aging. And that comes through the feds and the state. Some of that's from the administration of community living. Community living is with HHS under Secretary Kennedy. The plan there is to do away with the administration of community living. And funnel it into two different departments. We're concerned about that in regards to who will actually be administering that. And the number of staff people who have been let go or it's better known as dogged right now. So there's concern there. And then the workforce program, the real program, you all know that over the years, we've seen less and less funding out of that program. What they're doing and looking at is moving all the funding into a block grant, which I think might work out well. Problem is that they're going to be cutting about 1.64 billion out of that program within skinny budget. So we're looking at a number of different things. We as an organization are 71% funded by federal funds. Ours are mostly discretionary funds. Non-discretionary, of course, is your militaries, of security, Medicare. And so those are the things that are non-discretionary. The discretionary stuff is the stuff that I just mentioned, the aging funds, EDA, HUD, economic development, all that kind of stuff. So in the area of aging, first of all, let me say that I miss Pookie. I can't tell you how many times I've said, I love you, and nothing you can do about it. I miss that man very much. Just wanted to start with that. And I was honored to be there a couple of weeks ago. We now are with him. Say goodbye. Mentioned about the older Americans Act, that's what we're funded for through, provide for aging funds. That has not been renewed as of yet. We're hoping that it will be renewed at some time. Takes a while for some things to be renewed in Washington DC. We've got concerns with that. We do a number of things with assessments and home delivered meals. Number of things that are going to be eliminated within that skinny budget or insurance assistance program. And that is when we help seniors out to understand what their insurance options are, especially when it comes to Medicare Part D. And some of the other things that go on. Also to be eliminated is our family caregiver and respite service program. That is slated to be eliminated as well. This last year, we helped 13 families here in Allendale with about $20,000 worth of respite funds. One of the ones that we're really concerned about, I want to let you know, is long-term, long-term care on Bud's. They go out there and what they're looking at is your residential care facilities. Most vulnerable people that we have out there, I say the children, but it's also those seniors in those homes. And they maybe feel like they're being taken advantage of and they need somebody to be their advocate. We have two people in our office who work as on Bud's who are advocates for those seniors. That program is also scheduled to be eliminated within the city budget. Also Title III B legal services, we provided legal services to five Allendale County seniors. That is also scheduled to be eliminated. I feel like Dr. Doom up here. I'm sorry about that, but I wanted to give you an idea of the impact of what's going on. And how it will affect not just the organization, but the community as well. Okay? We talked previously, and y'all knew, those of you especially on our board, about the continuing resolution. The House and Senate last year did not pass a new budget. What they did was a series of continuing resolutions. So it went from October 1st into right after Christmas in December on the 28th. That was approved, some money came down from there. And then it was, then once again, up for approval on the 14th of March. It was approved by the House and Senate, signed by the president. Unfortunately, that money has not come. That money pays for some of the internal services and staffing, but it also pays for additional services to go out to the community. Including some of the home delivered meals and respite programs. So right now, we've received about 46% of what we expected from our allocation from this year. And we're still waiting on the other 54% and have no idea if or when we receive it. So we're in a holding pattern on that. Last, just a couple of months ago, I want to thank our board members here. Who realized that we had contracts for our service providers, including Aiken Council on Aging, uh, excuse me, Allendale Council on Aging. And we're able to fulfill those contracts using some of our savings money and other monies and moving some money around. I want to thank you again for that. At least we were making those contracts whole and paying care of the seniors where we could. Also, right now, we're following what the state is doing in the state budget for seniors right now. There's some difference between the House and the state. I've been trying to follow up to see if it's gotten to conference committee yet, or if there's any agreement on those funds. So far, I've heard nothing. I did see one preliminary budget that had additional staffing for the Department of Aging. But no tangible extra dollars. I know there's numbers running from three to five to eight million dollars extra. Not sure what's going to come through and how it's going to come through. So that extra state money would be beneficial. Over the last couple of years, in aging funds, we received more state money. And we've had our federal money reduced by 44% in total. So it's been a serious decline, because that's where most of that money comes, is federal money. Mentioned, thank you for the, taking care of the planning, the tenure, company has a planning update tonight. Wanted to thank you about that, thank you for that. We also have the Home Partnership, which is the housing consortium, and now they also is through HUD. That housing money is scheduled to be eliminated as well. Along with housing money from USDA Rural Development. And some of those programs that serve rural communities. Right now, with the funding that we do have, and we did receive the allocation from this past year, just recently. And so we have two potential housing rehab projects we're looking at here in Allendale County, or we're glad to be able to keep that moving. And finally, I want to mention in the area of community and economic, I mentioned about community and economic development. We did do the needs assessments back in January, a couple of things that came out, people were most concerned about. Public safety, workforce development, infrastructure. And I mentioned about the wastewater. On Tuesday, I signed the contracts with the town of Allendale for the wastewater collection system upgrade. And so happy to sign those and get that project moving. I think there's a couple of other things that we can be doing out there, we'll take a look at that as well. In regards to your South Carolina brownfields, environmental testing, we're still moving forward with that. I know it's a little clunky. And I'm not sure what's going to happen with DPA funding there. That is also set to be eliminated. Thoroughbred country, we are working with Southern Pabella Regional Chamber. We enjoy working with them very much. And finally, workforce development, we had our youth resource job fair here at the Allendale Library. That was back the other April, and in my understanding, it was a clear success. So really happy that we're able to do that. Mobile unit is still out there, making its rounds, the library and right across the street here for the brand building. And it says we've got a couple of meetings coming up, starting next week with our Regional Aging Advisory Committee on Monday. Workforce development in June, our board meeting also in June with a new members board orientation. And other meetings to follow from that. Have any questions, Dr.?
Dr. Monarch, the programs that will possibly be cut if we don't get the funding. Will that be done after June 30th or now immediately? How would that be done?
That's a good question, ma'am. My expectation that what they had in the skinny budget. First has to go through the House and the Senate Conference Committee, signed by the president. And they hope to take that to October 1st. And so that, any cuts would start at that time if all what they had in the skinny budget was approved and moved forward, ma'am.
October 1st.
October 1st, ma'am, yeah.
So the CR, didn't the CR will take us through September?
The CR, yes, sir. It will take us through September 30th. And as I said, lots of rumors. Until you give me a piece of paper telling me you're going to give me the money, rumors are just that, sir, and there's lots of them.
But logically, if the CR continues and does what is intended to do. We should be solid until September 30th.
It would be very, yes, sir. How pragmatic. The other area that I mentioned to the board is that we have a three-year planning grant with EDA for our economic development. That's one of our staples every year, and that still has not been approved yet. We were with Senator Scott's office last week, asking if they could, you know, find out what's going on with that. And so right now, we are, have been throughout the year without EDA money. Give you an example of how that's used. We've done advanced manufacturing with Aiken Tech. We were asked to look at advanced manufacturing funding for Orangeburg Calhoun Tech. Okay? Tech schools are some of the biggest users, along with some of the jobs that go with Soren Water, Rails and all that kind of stuff.
And the last ED, EDA project I can remember that we did, and it's been a while. It did help one of the lower industry, I think Scotsmen was recipients of a grant from EDA. So it's.
Last three that I remember, sir, were a rail spur in Barnwell, Breezy Hill, Soren Water in Aiken. And the nursing school at Orangeburg Calhoun Tech. And so EDA funds were involved with all those.
Okay.
So if we are not funded after October 1st, our local Office of Aging would be shut down or something?
Ma'am, what I would have, be able to provide, as we have previously, first of all, even if we did receive funding, I gotta tell you, most likely it would be a lot less. Second of all, I have no idea, ma'am. We're just playing this day by day, and that's just all we can do at this point, is wait and see what happens next, but also to inform. And so I came here tonight just to give you an idea of what we were looking at, because these services are essential to many of the folks in the communities.
Any questions, any more questions? Doctor, thank you so much. Next item. Our visitors, and I didn't see any, anyone wanting to comment, so we're gonna pass our visitors list and go directly into our council report. And starting out with our Vice Chairman, Mr. Chaney. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, Chairman, I've got a very short report, I have one report, and that's with the Public Safety Committee. We have requests from the sheriff to have a couple of trees cut down around the Sheriff's Department for safety reasons. We went out there, saw the trees, and we see if we can go in and get them cut down.
And that fund will come from...
Yeah.
Consolidation.
Consolidation, right. And that could be my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Mr. Conley.
I'll be brief as well. I did deliver the amended MOU between the county and the town of Allendale and the Sheriff's Department to provide police service for the town. Hand-delivered that to the Town Hall, I think it was Friday a week ago. I have not received any feedback as of yet, so as soon as we do, I'll let the council know. Also talked to Chief Stanley today. He should be having, getting some final numbers for the building of the St. Mark Fire Station. So hopefully about a week out from having all that information together. About a year ago, we approved to hire a consultant to help us with our ISO inspection. Council did approve it, but at the time, we did not have the money. Our administrator has let be known that the money is now available, and the Public Safety Committee recommends to proceed with this proposal that we've already approved. So that'll be, that'll be moving forward. Hopefully, that'll take six to 12 months, and that will help us discover our deficiencies in our, in our fire department to help us increase our ISO rating. That will lead to cheaper homeowners' insurance. And from the, also from the fire department, they've had a total of 129 calls the first four months this year. From Mr. Saab from EMS, they've had a total of 89 calls for the month, 60 going to Allendale and 29 out of county, and he's got some information that I'll share with you in executive session. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Conley. Councilwoman Jennings?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Office of Aging, Mr. Vice Chair Chaney and I are members of the Office of Aging Committee, and we would like to express our deepest condolences for the death of the Director, the Juan Smith, who has served in that position for several years, and, you know, he did an excellent job, and he will be truly missed. And so the council, at this time, express our condolences for his death. Also, I have passed some flowers that I think we might be holding on to them. The Chairman?
I think I passed...
From the library?
Jimmy, you go ready.
I received this today from the library. Ms. Sina Lloyd is requesting appropriation payments for both the third and fourth quarters to Allenhead County in a total of $45,350. And she said that they're desperately needing those funds to operate the library. So would, Ms. Lewis, I have a packet for you as well. Mr. White, would you give Ms. Lewis and Ms. Kiner and Attorney Sanders a copy of that, please?
I thought we, we sent some checks for the library.
We did, and they have, the third quarter appropriation has gone out.
They what?
The third quarter appropriation has been sent.
The fourth?
No.
Okay. And, and I would also, at this time, Mr. Chair, and I would ask that you recuse yourself from this, please. And Mr. Vice Chair, you recuse, you recuse. Do you need to step out? Mr. Chair, you can sit, I just don't say it.
I, accusing is one thing, but asking me to leave is another fact.
Well, anyway, I have a motion to promote William Robinson Jr. as the Assistant Administrator for the County of Allenhead, not the Administrator, the Assistant, because right now, we're going through some, the time right now where we have to employ some other people. So I think that he would be helpful with the new people coming in, and he's been doing a lot of things right now in that position. So our, this is a motion, Mr. Vice Chair, that Mr. William Robinson Jr. be promoted to Assistant Administrator for Allenhead County Government.
You heard the motion coming from Councilwoman Jennings, that William Robinson Jr. be promoted to Assistant County Administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Popple, move a second. That Mr. William Robinson Jr. be promoted to Assistant County Administrator? Any questions? All in field, I say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? Ayes aye.
Let the record show why we're accused.
And let the record show that the Chairman, William Robinson, excused himself from the vote.
Okay.
Turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is gonna be my report.
Yes, ma'am. That's the end of her report.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of which Ms. Jennings just took care of. Personnel Committee has, has been meeting. Obviously, we have some, some changes that we're addressing within the county. A lot, a lot of those issues will be discussed in executive session.
Okay.
I just wanted to note that we're also continuing to receive fees for building and business permits in the county. Last thing I wanted to report on, I've been communicating and meeting with Mr. Duane Ennis of Allendale County Alive, who, you know, really wants us to, to know what programs are going on regarding housing and other initiatives that Alive has been a part of. One of the programs is the Brighter Future Homes Project, which is $50,000, a grant awarded by Central Carolina Community Foundation for minor roof repairs and flooring. The maximum is $2,000 per household, and it focuses on elderly families with disabilities and low incomes. Also, the South Carolina, Allendale County Alive was selected for the South Carolina Long-Term Recovery and Resilience Collaborating by the South Carolina Association of Community Economic Development. And what this does is look, look to discuss long-term disaster recovery plans for our area. Obviously, we know that we have been hit severely in the last few years with natural occurrences, hurricanes, et cetera. So this would allow us to assess what needs to be done in our community. There will be a community vulnerability assessment, and up to $10,000 for hurricane recovery initiatives. Also, Dr. Monarch touched on this a little bit, there have been five residents approved through USDA Rural Development for housing initiatives, Section 504 program, and four Allendale County residents have been approved for South Carolina Housing Trust Fund money, and there's a wait, a current waiting list of 150 households for housing rehabilitation assistance. Also, Alive has been involved with USDA Self-Help, where residents participate in the repair of their own homes. And lastly, there are some volunteering community projects that are going on. Alive has partnered with Ms. Jackie Jones, who is currently, you know, working with the Office on Aging, to identify two seniors in need of ramps to be built, and those, those initiatives are gonna continue. One of the things that Mr. Ennis stated was that there has been a shortage of certified residential builders. So if anyone in the community knows of any residential builders that might be able to benefit that agency to help our citizens in Allendale County, please reach out to Allendale County Alive. And that is my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. White. Just want to focus on several informational things. Today, I sent out information on the SRS CRO. If you get a chance, take a look at the listing of equipment. That's all. I did also CCU on that listing. This is pretty much access, excess equipment from SRS, and there may be some equipment on there that we can, we can get at a very reasonable rate, and municipalities have first choice. We've got a 30-day window on all equipment coming from the site. Also, the CRO will meet on next Wednesday in Aiken, excuse me, North Augusta. Also, on Monday, Vice Chair Chaney and I, we met with the department heads and some of the elected official in what we call a pre-audit meeting. I thought it went well. Everybody seemed like they understood what they need to have ready when the auditor come, which we hope that will be very soon. And Chanel, you can, if you'd like to, have you been able to get any confirmation as to when that may happen?
Monday.
Monday.
He's coming down on Monday.
Okay.
He will begin.
Great. So the meeting we had on Monday was very timely, so I hope we kind of set the stage that we can have a very quick audit this year and be able to move forward. Also, we had a Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority meeting last week at the site. We are facing some challenges right now based on the cost. Does that mean, and we revised the budget based on costs, does that mean we may see fees go up? Well, we do know transportation costs will go up. But with us, we haul our own waste to Three Rivers, but the other counties certainly will see almost immediately a cost increase. Tipping fees, we're gonna be next month to take a better look across the board on, on the actual cost. And this is generally concerning a subcontractor that was involved in doing some additional work on our gas line at Three Rivers, the cost on that, and because of some contractor concerns with two other companies, one that we sell gas to and one that we may have to buy gas from, it has caused our rate of selling gas to be delayed considerably. So that's gonna impact the bottom line, and it will also impact what we may have to do in terms of tipping fees within the next year. I'm not gonna scare you and say that the rate's gonna go up immediately, but we're paying, our region is paying the cheapest tipping fee throughout the state, which saves a lot. The average tipping fee now is like 40, $43 to $44 per ton, and we're still at about $37, $38. So, you know, there's plenty of room if we have to make a increase. But that's not only, it's not on our plate yet, but it's certainly gonna be talked about. So, and, and as you know, if they go up, and I think I sent that information to you also, and if you notice, we are not, we are not reaching our commitment to Three Rivers. We offer about 300 tons. All the other counties are excess. We've given, each county has given X amount of tonnage that in order to meet and keep our rate at a certain rate, and we're about 300 tons short of that as of March 31st. So hopefully, in the next three months, we can kind of meet our obligation to Three Rivers. Also, I sent out a notice, and I was contacted by Mr. Black, Danny Black, from Southern, from Southern Carolina Lines, about having a meeting on the water and sewer study, special study, and we've contacted the town of Fairfax, the town of Allendale, as well as the county, and we're gonna meet Monday, the 19th, here at 10 o'clock, and kind of give an update on that water and sewer study. It's being delayed, and I think we need to find out why, and, and try to determine what we can do to speed it up, get it back on track. As you know, that money came directly from Congress, so either we're gonna go ahead and do it, and what I've said to Mr. Black is, we need to be very precise as to what the study promised to do. Once the study has been completed, what will be the go-tos from the county, from the town? So I hope it, I hope we all can leave on Monday with a better understanding, and I think the town of, both towns are committed to be there, so we'll, we'll certainly be looking to sit down and, for me, I know Matthew was involved in it, for me, it's gonna be a learning experience, and so we look forward to it. Lastly, want to talk about a joint meeting. I've been talking with Mayor Carter and some of the other councilperson, mainly Councilwoman The town of Allendale has discussed this in their meeting, about possibly meeting with the county. And right now, we're looking at maybe Friday, Saturday, tight time, June 20th, 21st. It's a kind of murky calendar. It's not set in stone, but what we hoping we can, you know, get away somewhere cheap and maybe spend the evening, early afternoon meeting, have dinner, and get up and work on it, half-day on Saturday, and come on back. You know, that's, that's the whole idea. And I say cheap, I don't mean cheap, 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 but, but cheaper than that. But, and we're not talking about going 100 miles. It's gonna be less than 100 miles, so I would think anything within 50 miles should be reasonable, you know? And so, council, please, please look at your calendar, and by that time, I'm sure the town will, will, would have commit. Also, we know that our present and administrator will be leaving us very soon. In your package I passed out, I got a proposal. It looks very good, and I like the council. And I like the council, especially the personnel committee. What I've seen of it, I like it. And I think it's something we need to consider. And I'm going to, going to ask the personnel committee to kind of look at it. This proposal, as I talk with the individual and the company that he represents, he's available to come down and talk with council at any time. So we're going to ask the personnel committee to take a look at it. And if we can do something as early next week, that'd be great. That's my report. Now we're down to our enem administrator. I think the air conditioner's working now. Can we, can we lower it? Yeah, cut it up some. It's getting a little too chilly here now. Thanks, sir.
I will be brief. I had a Zoom meeting with the administrator, with the administrators from Barnwell County and Aiken County. And it's in, in reference to the payment we received from formerly SRS. That payment amount has not changed in fourteen years. Also, the, there hasn't been an appraisal done. So what we did, what we agreed to do was to do a joint appraisal, where the counties will share the costs based on the size and whatever contribution. The new appraisal should increase the amount that we all receive. And another thing that was determined is that we can ask for additional funds every year instead of just waiting, just to see what they're going to do. But since this amount hasn't changed and everyone is looking for something different over the, over this period of time, we're going to have a, an agreement drawn up. The appraisal is going to be done, share the costs, and see what's going, what the outcome is going to be and how much the fees are going to change. But also making sure that an increase is requested annually. So, but the meeting went very well. Everyone was all in, and we just figured it'll be beneficial to everyone.
Can I, are you talking about the fee and the, the one with SRS?
Yes. That's the only thing there is.
Yes.
Because I, I, I had been talking with Bernice Jenkins, who was, who was in charge of that with SRS, but she's getting ready to leave. And she, because, you know, a few years ago, you know, Aiken and Barnwell had that appraisal done. And Allen Dale County did not want her.
We pulled a lot of, we pulled a lot of, yeah.
Because of the cost. And they actually, so I don't know if, if they're going to do another appraisal at this point. But what Bernice was advising me for Allen Dale, because I was, you know, I had approached her about, you know, getting, increasing Allen Dales. And she said you would have to do a new application and the appraisal. But she suggested that Allen Dale County contact, she, she's getting ready to go back to SRS and do what she's doing, but she's still in charge of it. But she suggested that we, that I send her a letter requesting that SRS, I mean, that it's NNSA now, who's going to be in charge of it. That, because right now, Allen Dale receives, the figure she gave me was seven hundred and twelve dollars per acre, which is, we've got roughly four thousand. Whereas the Aiken and Barnwell, because they did the appraisal a few years ago, they're getting a little, they're getting over sixteen hundred dollars per acre. And what she suggested that we do is contact, send her a letter, and she'll try to push it through to get them to, to wait us having to do an appraisal before they will raise ours. Try, to try to convince them to raise ours to where Aiken and Barnwell are, because the land is very similar.
Well, I think most of our property is, is waterfront property.
Probably has almost around the river. But the appraisal is very expensive, and what it is, you have to get an appraisal of the value of the property. When SRS bought it, I took, you know, I took it from over there, so. But she suggested I, and I'm asking, do you want me to send a letter requesting? This year is going to be the same as, as it's been. But she says going forward, you need to, you know.
Well, I think before you send a letter, I, because it looks like our administrator has already initiated something with the other two counties. And I think she need to go back and say, hey, we've been advised that we probably can send a letter.
Well, now I do it, but I would think we would want to send the letter, because if they've got to get, you know, appraisal, well, they've already got the information on their, their appraisal, because the appraisal is the value when the property was first initiated. I mean, and they've just done that. I, I really don't understand, you know, what y'all's conversation has been, because they've gotten their raise in the last few years up to the sixteen hundred.
Well, I, I would say, so this, this meeting was initiated by them, by the Barnwell County and Aiken County. So their request is they actually increasing from what it is now. So they're looking to do the whole thing, and they also want to do an annual request of an increase. I spoke to Meredith. Meredith said that, yes, the lady that you talked to, Bernice, and the other lady, they're both taking the early retirement buyout. And so this change, this is, they're thinking this is an opportunity to move forward with the whole thing, um, with the, with the appraisal. Personally, I suggest we do both. I said, I would say, I would want Walter to send the letter. You know what? Nothing beats failure but a try. So let's try to get the increase now and then still look at working on getting a new appraisal and seeing about an increase. There are two reasons for I would say that. Yes, we would like to do it as cheaply as possible, as quickly as possible for the increase. The second thing, if you look at the real estate market and, and just looking at everything, how many, it's, it's been less than three years since things have doubled. So with that being said, there may be an opportunity to increase the amount for everyone, but I'm saying, let's do this first. And it's, it's really not going to cost us anything for Walter to send a letter. So I would say, I'd go for both. But Walter began first.
Even if, if we could get an increase to what they're getting now, there, and everybody be trying to get total increase for everyone, but it's no, it's no telling how long it will take for that process to go through.
And I agree, and that's why I said the letter first, do both. Because to me, with this whole process and the amount of the cost, the extensive area, this can take a couple, two or three years. So definitely letter and the other part, and we could see what happens and what pans out. So I, I would, I would Walter the letter first.
All right. Council, you've heard that report from our administrator, and you've heard the recommendation from Mr. Sanders. What's your pleasure?
I agree. Let's go ahead and send a letter now requesting the increase to match more on Allen Dale. But let's still maintain that conversation with both counties moving forward. I'll make that informal motion.
Thank you. Moving properly second. Any questions? All in favor, a lady be known by saying aye. Poses, ayes aye. Yes, ma'am.
Last thing is I wanted to make sure that you saw that your April financial report is in front of you. Just to remind you that credit cards are not included on that credit card expenditures. But if you look at it, you have a more inclusive report of what happens specifically in each department along with all the revenues that I received to record. And you will notice that when you go through the pages, you'll see for the airport, we have collected eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars in fuel revenue. So the markup is very good. Lottie has done a great job at being continuous after we got everything working to get this fuel going. He just requested another order, so he is absolutely selling fuel. So I just wanted to make, bring that to your attention. And I will send electronic copies of this, this report and all the backup for this tomorrow.
Okay. Very good. Now, one of the things that came out of our meeting with our elected officials and, and the department head is that general ledger, the absence of. And I know you've been working very hard on, on that particular portion. Would you continue to do that?
Absolutely. So this report is just a culmination of, of part of the work. So what has happened where the, this year, this fiscal year, and the last fiscal year, we've had to figure out, or I've had to figure out, how do we get things into the system? Because we've been working on two separate systems. So what I've done is created entries and, but manually recorded any revenues that are received from the treasurer, any, when we receive the state revenues, when they release the funds, recording all of that. Also, retirement, health insurance, payroll, things that had not typically been recorded before. And so I made sure that we recorded everything based off where the expenditure originated with departments, so we can see the cost of each specific thing. So that's been done simultaneously, and I've done that for both fiscal years. So what you're saying is everything segregated by department. And where you'll see the biggest difference is operations. It's, operations is just the county before it was, the number was more like two million. And you'll see it's down to four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So everything is going where it's supposed to be. You can see that. And also, when the department heads come and ask what their expenditures are, you can break it down and be specific on what the costs were, expenditure was large and small. So I will continue to do that. And then also wanted to let you know, I spoke with, Valerie and I spoke with Spring Brook representatives. We're going to send a preliminary report that has the mapping of the two systems to them so that they can begin the implementation. It is on its way. So we're talking about just a matter of weeks before the next stage happens.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Sanders.
Of course, I have some matters, legal matters in the executive session. The only other thing I had is concerning the Google crossing. William and I did have a Zoom meeting with CSX and our engineer and with the Department of Transportation. And we, we've learned that we're not going to have to get additional permits for DOT. So we're set with them. And CNX is, is now working on it again. And they've indicated, indicated in our Zoom meeting that they would, within thirty days, they would get back with us after they've reviewed everything that's been sent to them. And hopefully, they don't get done this time.
Are we going to follow up with them if we don't hear in thirty days? Why our engineer, why, why did our engineer drop the ball on this?
Well, because what happened was Kenneth Johnson, who was in charge of, you know, for the county, he left. And he, it was assigned to another individual lady. And she never got that information until we started following up. And, and now she's working on it, and she seems to be pretty aggressive, so. But we'll see, you know, this, this has been going on since nineteen ninety-nine, I believe, when they closed that.
At least.
Crossing. And I can tell you that the, the residents out there are very antsy. I had received a call from, you know, Margaret Junior, who was sort of ahead of them. She had basically said they didn't care about, they didn't want the crossing anymore. And I told her, I actually told her, if that's actually the case, you need to come to council and tell us, because we've got a lot of money set aside to do that crossing. But I, I told her all this too, and I said, I think it's going to happen sooner than later, but I can't guarantee anything, because we've been working on this thing for, or it's been in the process for twenty-seven years.
Okay.
And that's it.
That's it? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Okay, we're down to item thirteen, old business, the third and final reading of the ordinance adopting the Allen Dale County Twenty Twenty-Four Ten Year Comprehensive Plan. Do you have to totally need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the third and final reading of an ordinance adopting Allen Dale County Two Thousand Twenty-Four Ten Year Comprehensive Plan.
Sir. Moving properly second. Any question? All in favor, a lady be known by saying aye. Poses about the same sign? Ayes aye. Excuse me. Item fourteen, new business. First item, A, Allen Dale County Museum Building. William, are you going to take on that?
Allen Dale County Council, thank you for recognizing me. On April eighth, the county made a request for qualification potions of Onski Bo for architecture and engineering services, inspection services for the Allen Dale County Museum Building. The proposal submitted deadline was May eighth. We received four proposals for the A and E services, and those were included in your package. Four companies that submitted proposals for the county council consideration were LBE Incorporated out of Monks Corner, Constantine Engineering out of Charleston, Raymond Galopa out of Greer with offices in Charleston, and JLA out of Augusta. The Allen Dale County Historical side, along with Mr. Matthews, they reviewed the proposals, and their recommendation is for LBE and Constantine Engineering to be invited for a site service with RFP, RFP default. We appreciate the county council taking the time to consider this. And so we, we want to continue to move forward with, with, just so we can renovate the building.
Okay, the recommendation is R, RLB?
LB and Constantine Engineering.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the historical side.
Second. Moving properly second, that we accept the proposal and invite LBN?
LBE.
LBE. They had a Monks Corner. Right? I remember that. LBE out of Monks Corner.
And Constantine.
And Constantine. LBE, Constantine, Monks Corner. Thank you, William. Got a motion? All in favor? Poses? Ayes aye. We have two requests. One is animal control, and the other one is procurement records. Walter, you going to talk about that, or you going to let the administrator talk about those two?
I'm not aware.
Okay.
You can talk about it.
Sit down.
About the animal control, what is it up and under?
I, I'm not fully, I'm not fully aware of them.
I mean, we don't need to approve a FOIA request.
No, we don't. But I just want to know if we want to elaborate on what they asking, pretty much.
We've also got a few other ones. One of the things I was going to ask the council, have we established what we charge?
I thought we always.
Yes, we got a sheet.
Yeah, I thought we, used to be a dollar sheet or something like that, isn't it?
It's twenty-five dollars a page.
Is it twenty? Is it twenty-five?
We had provided, we had three forms.
Twenty-five cents per page.
And they were all three different, and all three have different prices.
I thought it was a dollar page or what.
Says copy cost and charges on our request form. Research time, fifteen dollars an hour, USB flash drive, ten dollars, paper copy, twenty-five cents per page, GIS maps, three dollars. Close to tongue-balling.
Are those the prices that we charge? Because we've got, actually got three different forms of varying what the charges are.
I thought we revised that, not within the last year, have we not? Okay. We need to, if I remember reading those requests, they're a couple of weeks old. Right?
We've got them in our packet.
Yeah, what I'm saying, the timelines, you know, when something, when we get a request, we need to respond as quickly as we can. I think the law gave us extra number of days to respond.
You've got, depending on how far you have to go back, determine your response time.
For two weeks is long enough.
Yeah, because it's twenty or forty days, I believe, of the time. And what, when I actually have responded in the past, you know, if, if they sent it to the wrong person, I'm telling them where I'm sending it, because they would send something to us that should have gone to the sheriff's department, as an example, because we don't have the information. But like on, on other ones, like the one I think that's in the.
The packet for the, for the animal statistics. Yeah, so, but it was addressed to the sheriff. I know it was, it was addressed to.
That's one that would go, our gentleman, when the sheriff would have to respond to that, you know, not the government administration. But what I usually do, like on, we've got another one, um, that, and, and they usually say, if it's more than fifty dollars, you need to let them know. And that's how I respond the first time, is tell them that I estimated cost of doing the research and the cost of material is so and so, and we require a certain deposit. More times than not, we never hear from them.
Ms. Lewis, do you have a, sorry, we didn't get a chance to talk to you. Ms. Lewis, do you have a recommendation on who, um, should handle this FOIA request from Post and Courier?
So the, um, we're talking about the, we're talking about the pets. That's gonna be a little bit more complicated. Remember, we had a change, uh, in, um, we had a change during the year, so we had, um, the sheriff took it over sometime during the year, so I don't think.
I think that's, that speaks for something, I mean, the other request from the Post and Courier. Who do you recommend handles that? That's the P card account statements, P card usage policy and check registers. Who do you recommend?
Well, the thing about, we don't, when it comes to P cards, we don't really use.
Okay, well, who can give a check registers for two years?
Check registers, that can happen in administration.
But who can do it?
So we can do that, um, it could be, it could be, um, that could be done in accounts payable, that could be done by myself, that could be done by Esther, that, that could be, that's actually something that can be performed in finance. But as far as a P card, we don't really have a P card, we just have regular credit card uses, usage, um, not a specific procurement card.
Okay, so who do you recommend to handle what we do have?
Um, if you like.
Yourself or Ms. Bridges or?
Um, Ms. Bridges could do that, that would be easy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation that we assign Ms. Bridges to this FOIA.
When you need to additionally send a letter acknowledging you received it during the.
Well, I'm saying we need to establish somebody who's gonna handle it.
Yeah. We're in the process of gathering the information, and, um, we may need some additional time.
Well, you got a motion there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's second?
Sir.
Okay. And this is only on the post and courier inquiry.
Right.
Is that right?
Yes.
I think, okay. You heard a motion and questions? All in favor, let it be known, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Can we establish before we leave that we need to go and take this form and revise it? Because I'm hearing all kind of numbers in terms of requests and charges, et cetera. Can we, Walter, it should be uniform, no matter who requests it.
Right, oh, yeah, it's just, but I'm just saying, there are three different forms that you already found in the instructions.
Okay.
I don't know which one they give to people when they request them.
Whatever they fill out is what you gotta stick to for now. I mean, as long as it's been requested on the form, you're gonna have to go by that.
The one with the fifteen dollars per minimum research time?
Yep, right.
And ten dollars for the flash and twenty-five cents per page.
So whatever form they fill out, we've obviously got to honor that.
Can we ask the rec, the personnel committee to take a look at that form and, uh, give us a recommendation? So we can actually have one form that will be the uniform throughout the county? Okay. All right. Any other business? Ms. Matthew, you seem like you, 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 you got something you wanna say? We've already passed. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
The moving properly second, that go, we go into executive session? All in favor? Aye, sir.
Back in the journal session, council, is there any business we need to bring forth?
Mr. Chairman, I move that council accept the recommendation of the personnel committee to hire an accounts payable manager.
Second.
The movement properly second that we make an offer to hire a account payable clerk effectively.
Accountable manager.
A manager. Oh, okay, account payable manager, okay. Nah, it makes no difference, I didn't hear the manager part. Okay, we've heard the motion, any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Council, is there any additional business? If not.
I'm making motion in the journal.
Seconds.
Moving properly second after the turn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.